I will call the Monday, May 20th Commission meeting to order. Please stand and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
So we have roll call. We have Commissioner Bailey, Commissioner Cooter. Mr. Holman left me a message this morning. He is out on an electrical repair for the city of Berlingame, and he said he's going to try to get here later sometime today. So he, not sure what time that may be. And Clerk Michelle Morris, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
I would move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any public comments? Our first order of new business is Rebecca McFarland with the Frontier Extension.
Good morning.
Morning.
I am here today to show you some of our reports. And just give you a quick update about Frederick's. So I'm happy to report as of January 24th, June 24th, we're going to be fully staffed. We're going to welcome our new Horticulture and Natural Resources agent. She'll be housed at the Ottawa office, but of course she will be serving Osage-Anderson of Franklin Counties. Today I'm sharing with you again our 2023 annual report, just to give you an overview of many of the activities and programs that we're involved in, and then our first quarter of 2024 Making a Difference Report. But the main thing I want to share with you today that you may have heard is about K-State 105. And K-State 105 actually is an economic prosperity initiative for the state of Kansas. And so we have funding available to really boost the economy in Kansas. And I'm just going to go over some information about that, answer any questions you may have, and then also just share a little bit about some of the work that's actually being done in Osage County in regards to K-State 105. So as I mentioned, it's an economic growth and advancement initiative for all 105 counties in Kansas. And the initiative has received five million in state funding to funding support for fiscal year 2024. So it really is there to forge connections and partnerships that create access to additional expertise within our higher education institutions and state agencies. So really partnering and collaborating, K-State University, other border region schools, community colleges, state agencies, nonprofits. And really to build capacity in, again, all 105 counties in Kansas. And many of our units at K-State University, of course, including K-State Research and Extension, we also have the K-State Technology Development Institute are all involved in those. Some of our statewide partners are Network Kansas, the Innovative Center in Northwest Kansas, and GoToPika. And some of the project partners include the Kansas Small Business Development Center and Porthead State University. So really, I think probably what's important for you to know is that through this collaboration, they're really looking to work in four areas, and that's job creation, capital, and equity investment, business development, technical assistance, and workforce development as well. And so we're also looking at, you know, what can we help with in the areas of childcare? And I've worked in childcare across our district, affordable housing, as well as healthcare, broadband access, and other elements that affect our prosperity in Kansas. And I think you are aware, I remember Heather being there, and you were also at the Economic Development Summit last, end of last summer, Heather was at that grant writing workshop that we held in Melbourne. So I continue to work with Pauline on some projects. I was at Osage City Estrow Development Committee last month, talking to them about K-State 105. One of our K-State Community Vitality Specialists was there, talked to them about the Kansas Community Empowerment Program, which is formerly known as Pride, and Osage City was a Pride community at one time, and they're interested in that. Of course, we have several other Pride communities in Osage County, or Kansas Community Empowerment Programs in Osage County. So I'm doing some work with Melbourne as well, assisting a little bit with a community center, maybe some updates there. And then also looking at helping with some sidewalks, some curb and guttering as well. So again, really just wanted you to be aware that we are, we have a lot of projects and programs going on, but we also, K-State 105 is a fairly new initiative. And if there are challenging issues, projects, programs, that you really think might fit K-State 105, or you just don't know where to go, please feel free to contact me. I will do my best to make those connections. Just sent one in for Ottawa not too long ago as well, so really doing my best to make those connections as well. You have any questions for me? Again, I want to thank you for your time this morning, and of course, you can always stop by our office there up on the hill as well. And we're staffed of almost 16 staff members, so we're here to serve our communities.
Was there anything in these that you wanted to go over, or these are just for us to take and look through?
That's for you to look at, again, just to see the impact that we're making across our three county area.
Do you have another one of those 105 bills? Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Thank you.
Our next item is Lori Kirkendall with Soil Conservation.
I'm Lori Kirkendall, I'm District Manager for the Osage County Conservation District. This is the same as I knew it to. Can I just attach that to your, oh, okay.
Is it this one?
Yes. So last year we asked for-
I was wondering what that was. I'm thinking, that doesn't look like our minutes.
Last year we asked for $40,000, and we were able to give us that. This year we're asking for the same amount. We've been keeping our budget in line so that we don't have to make an increase this year. We did lots of good work, you know, Osage County, doing some presentations at the schools, and had some field days on brush management, had a women's workshop. We tend like the Topeka Farm Show. So, and then this year the state picked us as a trial project for the Strobridge, Reservoir, Carbonell Lake, whichever you want to call it, to do some work around it to help improve the water quality there. So it'll be a pilot project. We'll see how it goes over. We're one of three that was picked in the state, so.
You're talking about East Lake?
Yes.
Yeah, did you say Stowaway?
Strobridge.
Strobridge, yeah. Yeah, most people don't buy that name, but I think that's the official name.
Yeah, yeah.
Everyone knows by the name.
So anyway, so we do have that this year that's new. And then there's lots of new cover programs for different people to get involved in. I don't know, Keith, anything else, Dan?
No, we reach out, as you can see Lori has, and we help Salt Creek Watershed and the Waukesha Rapids, which is 56 Highway North, which is, again, a reservoir protection program and protection drainage there. We did get state and federal monies to hire technicians, a lot of the landowners, a lot of demand for continued conservation upkeep and then additions. And I think it was the last year we hired Jace, young man from Melbourne, he's here.
Oh, yeah.
There's Jace.
We have our office there.
And so got some funds in with Lori's work to make a local hire and help out our efforts here. We just seem to be a high-functioning conservation district. Excuse me. A lot of that's Lori's work, a lot of it's the landowners, because we are an agricultural-based county, and the demand for soil conservation and range management's pretty high in that area. We appreciate it when you guys come to our annual meetings, do see you there, and stay in touch with us that way, and your support.
It's always fun to see the kids getting involved in that, too, and doing the pictures.
Yeah, we get a kick out of it, too.
It fills that lunchroom up. I don't know how many people show up to the meeting, but it's quite a few, it looks like.
Yeah, we've been up to last couple.
Is it, is it around 100 or better?
Yeah, it's about 150.
So on the back here, all that says the funds into the county. These are the funds coming into the county that then are managed through your office?
Yeah, the ones with the asterisks are managed through our office. The other ones are in our CS funds. Pat Pinter's here, and Jacob Wekel, they work for our CS. But those funds all go through our office, too, but we would still have those funds if we didn't have a conservation issue, but just the asterisk ones we wouldn't have. So we bring in, just over $168,000 into the county, various things.
It's definitely money well spent by the county, so.
So David Cullen is also on our board, and so is JD Yerish.
I thought I recognized some of these people.
Yep. Anyway, so if there's anything we can help you with, I've been trying to go to a lot of the federal meetings on the lakes to make sure that, I know in the past the federal governments tried to decrease the amount of the pilot payment they paid the county, the payment with the taxes. So, but I haven't heard that they've been thinking about that, but I know it's nowhere near what you'd get if you could tax that land as agriculture.
Well, thank you.
All right. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next item is in Powerhouse with Melissa, and I should know your last name, but it's not written on here.
Landis.
Landis, that's right.
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay, as you'll know, I am Melissa Landis, and I'm with Empower House Ministries, I catch one, too. And we are a service provider, providing housing and life skill training to addicts in their early recovery. And the document here that I've given you has got a ton of details, but we're trying to be in the best interest of full disclosure. So there are, statistics-wise, our average age is 35. But I really want to direct you to page four. Their average income when they come into us is super low, less than $3,000 in the previous 12 months. And that's shown on page four. Page five is criminal history. And as you can see, almost half of our people have at least three felony convictions. Most of the time that's related to drugs. And then you can also see the level of supervision on the bottom of page five. Page six, you're going to see that 71% of them are on probation. Nearly 60% of them are on community corrections and/or drug court. And then we've also got some on parole. We are serving Lyon and surrounding counties. Page seven has a little bit of updates, three programs. Program number one is our housing program for females. We can house up to nine female addicts. That program is almost a little over two years old. On the right, you'll see a graphic that really kind of describes how comprehensive and in-depth our programs are, so that we're dealing with not just the addiction, but all the pieces that accompany addiction. Everything from employment to parenting, to budgeting, to credit, and dealing with a ton of court issues to make sure they're in compliance. Page nine really outlines our men's housing program. This is a new program for us. We just started this up November 1. That house is a big old two-story in Emporia, can house up to either nine or 10. On the bottom of that page, I gave you some details about some of our recent funding. We received funding through the Kansas Fights Addiction Grant in the amount of $200,000. And with those funds, we actually purchased the house. It gave us about $94,000 for the down payment. One of the other key items in there was $20,000 for a transportation van, and then it covered some operations. The van actually comes in, I just have fun with him, should be ready for us sometime tomorrow, but it covered the vast majority of that. Third piece of what we do is life scope clinics, covered on page 10, where we bring in typically anywhere between 15 and 20 on a given Saturday morning. And we talk about budgeting, we talk about credit, we talk about parenting, we talk about self-care. And for those, we're able to bring in three to four different speakers, feed them lunch, donuts for breakfast. And then we also have door prices to kind of really bring up that attendance. And then on page 11, you'll start to see what our income sources were. This is for the calendar year of 2023. And what I want you to see is page 12. When you look at our expenses, 98 point, let's say 99, right? 99% of all of our expenditures specifically goes into programs, rather than administrative or fundraising expense. And then down below, there's a graph that describes for men during that calendar year, it's $38,000. Ladies was $48,000 in expenses, and life scope clinics was about four. So things are going to change for us moving forward, because now we've got two full houses to operate. The 2023 finances did not, it only included three months of men's operations. So program expenses are listed on page 13. Page 14 shows our board members. We have gone through strategically some change in leadership. Same, essentially same board members as before, but Chuck Smith assumed the role of president, and Victor Edelman in vice president. Page 15 and 16 is really what our budget, we believe, is going to look like for July of this year to June of next year. And what you'll see when you look on page 16 is we are looking at a deficit of about $16,000. If y'all will recall, we also collect rent directly from our residents so that we can hopefully cover expenses. Budget notes on the bottom of 16. Since we bought the men's house in February of this year, we've now got over $250,000 worth of renovations to do. Somewhere in that ballpark, we've got $100,000 already on board for that and committed. The budget that's listed above did not include any capital expenses. And then when you look on page 17, you'll see that as operations are now, we'll be impacting 24 men through housing each year, 24 women through housing each year, and 24 additional that attend clinics. So everything that we do is about allowing and encouraging and empowering the addict to move past the act of addiction. Let's talk about Osage County for a moment. Last week, I received four applications from people in Osage County. Two of the ladies were in Osage County Jail. One is in Melbourne, and then there was another gentleman as well. So applications are coming in from Osage County. So I wanted to make you aware of that. I know I just bombarded you with a ton of details, but you've got it all in writing if you have any questions. And really what I'd like to see you do is look at us for the special alcohol funds. Let me pull my notes. We have received $25,000 from Lyon County and $15,000 from Coffey County. Both of those were one-time allocations, okay? Because they normally don't spend it year after year. Like in Coffey County, that was funds that had accrued since 2012. And then last year, we also received $2,500 from Chase County. So I'd like for y'all to consider us from the special alcohol funds, which, as you recall by state statutes, drugs, alcohol, cessation, education, and treatment. Any questions while I take a breath?
I don't think so. I remember you from previous years, and it looks like it's growing quite a bit.
Yeah, we're growing. Things are going well.
How long, on average, is someone that enters the program?
And that's something we've really been working on. Originally, it was running about 60 days. Now, when I looked last week, we had, they were averaging about 180. I've got several departures coming up, success stories. So I've got three ladies that are moving out probably in the next 30 days or so. And all of them have been with us eight months, and 15 months, and 15 months. And they're ready, right? They're ready for their own place. So they can be with us for up to 18 months. Their minimum stay and minimum commitment is 90 days. Lot of turnover in that first month, because they think they're ready, but they're not. They think they're ready for that structure and accountability, but yet when you say curfew's 10 o'clock tonight, they kind of have a problem with that, right? So there's a lot of turnover in that first month, but once they get through that, they tend to be, could be up to a year.
So you guys work hand-in-hand with the Sheriff's Department, or with the jail, or?
Here, or, yeah. I actually was in contact with one of the jailers last week to get that Zoom interview scheduled. And I did give them the offer of, hey, I'm going to be in Osage County if you have any set by afterwards.
Okay.
So, but they're familiar with us, and what you'll find is, it may be dead quiet for a little while. And then just like last week, here comes four applications, like, where'd that come from? So, and I'm in Lyon County Jail as a pastor as well, chaplain. And I guarantee all the jailers are going to be pretty comfortable with my name and know who I am, as well as sheriff's officers. But for the most part, it's straight with the jail. About a third of our people actually come to us straight out of jail, meaning we're literally picking them up from jail. They may literally not have a stitch of clothing other than what they're wearing, no ID, no work boots, nothing. And we'll take care of all of that. A third of them are going to come out of rehab, which is usually, not always dictated by the courts that they go attend rehab. And then a third are going to be self-referred, meaning they're coming from somewhere else.
So your service area, is that growing? I looked at your map.
Our intended service area is Lyon and surrounding counties, but it does, it does pick up. As an example, one of your young ladies in Osage County Jail right now is actually, I think it was her, is actually from Osawatomie, right? So, but she's coming out of Osage County. So I think to date, we've served probably about 16 different counties. And the relationships with corrections is something that I'm really focused on, so that corrections officers are comfortable and familiar with what we're doing, and we're not duplicating efforts. And that includes parole, too. So parole, probation, community corrections, and drug court out of Lyon County. So, any other questions? Sounds like you guys have a full agenda today.
That's a lot of info.
Yeah, well, it's all there. There's going to be a test over this tomorrow.
Okay, hopefully it's open book.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're so welcome. Have a great, great day to lunchroom.
Our next item is Colleen Mendoza with Economic Development.
You want to go check on her? You might holler Matt, too, when you go by to let him know that he's next.
Okay, Lori, is there, I just called you.
Are you ready?
Do you want to message him and see if he has any idea? Yeah, he just said, I was looking at you at some point. Do you want to message him and see if he can come through? Yeah, message him and see. Okay, we'll be right back.
Colleen is going to message Les to see if he has any idea on his time. Colleen is going to message Les to see if he has any idea on his time for arrival, because she would like him to be here when she presents her request. So she's going to check on that, and then we may have to...
Yeah, I'm gonna go grab Matt.
Rearrange. So, and I guess Matt is upstairs.
Okay.
I don't know if he has his phone on him, so... I think he was up in Lion Development, so I'll see if I can... Did you message him?
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Glad it didn't blow away last night.
Felt like we were going to a couple times.
Yes.
So is he able to begin today?
You know what? No guarantee.
Okay.
He said to go ahead and proceed.
Is he able to hold my phone at all?
Uh, yes, he is, if we need to, if we need to get ahold of him.
Okay.
So, yeah.
I guess that tornado missed his house by like a half a mile, but he's messing with the city of Birmingham.
Oh, is that right? I heard. I mean, I was at 10:30 at night. I was watching and listening. So, well, I don't know. It must hurt. Commissioners, if you're okay, I'd like to start off with just sharing with the community the project that we've been working on. And then I have a couple of asks towards the tail end of it, if that's okay.
Just make sure and speak.
Okay.
You have a very soft voice. Quiet voice, but just so that you speak clearly.
But a loud laugh.
Yes.
Commissioners, as you know, the work of economic development is all about community. In the fall of 2023, Osage County held a vision summit, where we aligned on strategies that would strengthen Osage County economic competitiveness and build a thriving community. Together, we voted to leverage county assets, proximity to markets, amplify tourism around our lakes, rail services, increase housing accessibility, grow revenue to improve our tax environment, create jobs, and foster growth in infrastructure revitalization and business development. I am very excited today to share that Osage County, Kansas, in collaboration with neighboring Coffey County, Kansas, is preparing to apply for a CHRISI rail grant to develop a rail-served transload facility to support economic development in the rural farming communities of southern Osage County. The proposed transload facility in southern Osage County will be developed to support local industries and to bolster development of the new mega-development of a $1.9 billion chip factory just three miles to the south of US 75. The development of this rail-served transload site in Osage County will have a meaningful economic impact on both the county and the adjoining region. Neighboring Coffey County, who is working in collaboration with Osage County on this project, is working diligently to secure the development of the chip factory, and they hope to be awarded by November. This accounts for billions of dollars invested in the potential to employ thousands of residents. This anchor project, combined with dozens of support industries, will be able to use the Osage County transload facility to keep trucks off the road and keep costs to a minimum. Initial estimates indicate it will result in the shipment of up to 6,000 rail cars of freight per year, removing 24,000 trucks from Kansas highways each year. The transload facility will be located adjacent to the BNSF Railway's TransCon main line, which goes through Osage County, providing rapid connectivity with markets across the United States and through access to various ports worldwide. Now the fun begins with the application process. The CHRISI grant application will allow Osage County to tap into 200-plus billion pool of funding for development of a transload facility. The county is working with the National Rail Consulting Group to complete preliminary engineering, technical, environmental, and economic analysis, conceptual design, as well as to apply for the CHRISI grant for the planning portion of a transload facility, as well as apply for a Kansas bill matching funds. The federal match for this grant is up to 80% of the total project cost. Osage County Economic Development is in discussions with landowners in the southern Osage County region to locate the site. A transload site is as much a rail car storage facility as it is a location for transferring bulk commodities from train to truck. The planned transload facility will consist of a storage yard and a transload yard. The storage yard will have two tracks for interchanging with the BNSF railway, one running track, and three storage tracks. A connecting track will enable efficient marshaling of rail cars, as well as a connection to the transload site. Trucks will be able to easily access 75 Highway without impacting nearby Olivet. Similar projects have yielded from 50 to 100 direct jobs and up to 2,000 indirect jobs, including a new revenue source for Osage County, projected to be at $1 million per year. The time is now to pursue the development of this core economic development site, and the potential afforded by the CHRISI program is the ideal program to make this project a reality. So I wanted to share that with you folks, as I know you have some awareness, but also with Osage County, so you can see the exciting opportunity we have before us. Today, we are only discussing the planning portion. And the first grant application that we would go after is just the planning portion. And it would be, sorry, maybe I should stop before I go into this. Any questions before I go into the financial part of it?
No, you have summarized this very well.
Okay, good, good. For the planning portion of this, once again, this would be for the preliminary engineering, environmental review, economic analysis, operation planning, and site design. We project that the initial part of this will be a $1 million project, of which, if we're awarded the grant, it would be $750,000 awarded by the federal, by the federal grant. We would then layer on to that an application to the Kansas bill for matching funds, up to $200,000.
So at 80% or 75%? 80% be $800,000?
Yes, although in talking with the, at the state and with the feds, they would like to see the county have some skin in the game, which is going to be one of my asks today. So again, up to $750,000 from the grant, $200,000 from the Kansas bill. And the ask today is that we contract with the National Rail Consulting Group to actually write the grant. The application is due on 5/28. Like most federal grants, they run around $20,000 to $25,000, just for the grant-writing process and the administration. The National Rail Consulting Group has asked for $20,000 for the writing of the grant, and that we would get also the preliminary, all the preliminary studies, as well as the site plan. I don't have the contract in my hand right now. We wanted to have this discussion first and then follow up. I do have the PO today to sign, if you're agreeable. And so that's ask number one today.
And if I remember, this has been budgeted.
Correct.
So funding is budgeted for this, for this year.
Correct. We anticipated this project, and it's in the Economic Development Department 27 budget already. And then number two, as a part of this, you know, all of these entities are going to invest in Osage County, and they would like to see the county also have some skin in the game. At 5%, that would be a commitment of $50,000. And those funds would need to be available by spring, second quarter of 2025. And so all that we need to do today is simply sign a letter of funding support commitment.
Has Josh looked over all the paperwork?
He has, he has not seen the contract with the Rail Consulting Group yet. As soon as I have it, I'll shoot it over to him.
And I believe the timeline on that would actually not be till '25.
Right, right. Spring, second quarter of 2025, yep.
But if we were to commit to that, then we would need to be putting, is that in the budget now? Or you would need, that would need to be in your '25 ask?
I'm hoping the commissioners will find some monies. I don't know if that's possible. I have, I do have this amount covered, but I kind of have it earmarked for another project that we haven't discussed yet, so.
But signing that today, that...
Would be a commitment.
Would be a commitment.
We do have $50,000. It sits in somewhere.
You said second quarter, '25.
But the first thing is, is to pay the $20,000 that the grant written. And then we're just saying that we will have the $50,000 in there in the spring.
Correct.
That's subject to the grant being approved, correct?
Yes, exactly. And the other part of that is, if by chance the chips factory would not be approved, we can always, if awarded, we can always say no, thank you.
So I would move that we...
Okay, I, one more question. Do we know that, you said this, I don't remember. If we apply for the CHRISI grant, what's the timeline of learning if we're awarded that?
We'll know, good question. We'll know by October of this year, yeah.
So if we commit to the $50,000 next quarter and we're not awarded that, then that's just negative.
Yep, exactly, exactly. I believe there may be one, another anticipated question is, how much in the second phase of this, do we project this project could be? And it could be up to $20,000, excuse me, $20 million project, of which, we would do exactly the same thing. We would apply for a grant for that, which would cover 80% of the cost. We would apply for the Kansas bill to help us match that, and then the county would have some investment.
And then you'd still have progress. I mean, the county's going to put the money upfront, but you're going to get the money back, so.
Yes, yes, exactly.
Well, and for the size of the project, it is a small portion on our end.
Yeah, for a big win.
The overall cost of the project. Do we, do you have anything else to present?
No, if you have any other questions.
Should we call Les and see if he would like to be in on this?
I think I already know where Les stands by listening to our previous conversations. That's why I have no problem making a motion to proceed with it.
Okay, so can you take the motion? Is it for the first request?
So my motion would be is to, I would move to pay the $20,000 for the grant writers, have the $50,000 available, and, which is already there. So it's just giving them a letter of commitment, no big deal. But with Josh and I looking over the contract to make sure it meets all the requirements needed.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to make sure she gets all that. Did you get all that from Jay? Okay. I would second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. If I may just take a moment to thank a couple of other people. I wanted to thank the Board of Commission for continuing to support managed growth. Each one of our municipalities has supported this with a letter of support, which I'm very grateful. A huge thank you to the Coffey County Commissioners, as well as Economic Development Director Bobby Skipper, who have been side-by-side with us on this, and lots more exciting things to come. I mentioned earlier that we've been working on a lot of things in the last eight months, and wanted to just quickly share that in the next two, three, four weeks, we will have a housing assessment update for the Board of Commission and the community, which is going to provide accessibility to housing for all of our municipalities. We also, they challenged us to leverage our assets and our lakes. And I'll be bringing something to the Commission for approval related to a tourism website to really put us on the map, the beginning of putting us on the map. And we will also have Quentin Roberts share with us the strategic plan for Osage City. They've been also working alongside of us with the comprehensive plan on their strategic vision. And so they'll be bringing that as well, so we can have that.
Can I see him on next week's meeting?
On the 28th. Yeah, that could be next week. Yes, oh my gosh, so quick. Thank you so much.
On this, do you want to save that for Les to sign?
Yeah, I'll connect with him.
And will you get that to Josh as soon as you get the contract?
Yeah, absolutely, definitely, yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, where's that at? Ms. Matt Booker? There you are. Next item is Prazer Matt Booker.
How are you this morning?
I'm here. I'll hand these out. There's three quotes. You guys already seen the original? I don't know if you saw the original, if you were here that day or not.
What? Give me...
So we have the data collection truck go down. It had been making noise for months. And we had it into one sort of shop here in town. They checked it out, didn't see anything wrong with it. Not much after that, it got scanned on the side of the road, the rear axle went out. I called Les. He said tow it to Carbondale Tire and Auto, because it was, that was close. So that's where we towed it. They checked it out and found that we needed a new rear end in it. The, we got the one quote I brought before, I think it was just... Um, the, we got the one quote I brought before, I think it was just you and Les that were here.
I think that's right.
Yeah, I think you, you were gone. Um, and they requested two more quotes, a total of three. So I've got, um, this new quote and that new quote, yeah, those aren't the same quote. And you'll see the difference in these two. This one, he only quoted two tires, so I added another two tires, that's the adjusted amount down there. This one didn't have tires on the front page, but the back two pages are two different types of tires.
So it's that plus one of these, so.
Yes.
Or is that the total with the tires?
That's the total with the tires on this one, yes.
So these are the two.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Compared to.
What's the warranty here?
Um, does it say on there? I don't know, but he, he said anything about a warranty. It's used as one-year warranty for parts and labor.
So it's our, yeah, and this one says it'll be a one-year warranty.
Yeah, actually three fifty, so it'll be.
So you got a three fifty of that. So there's your, is that correct?
That's what I read again, yeah.
Where your loan proposal? And the county's used them on several things in the past, so.
Okay.
If you're. All these are using the used one, it looks like.
Yeah, I believe so, that's what I read.
Yeah, this one shows six month just on, so that's why you're paying that extra if you do the other. So which tires are you wanting to go with?
Probably, I think every, all of them would make the quotes the same, quoted the hand to the. I believe, so that would be this one, that's the one I included in that price on the contract.
So personal opinion here, spend the extra twenty dollars on a tire and get that tire.
Okay.
It's a lot better tire.
Okay.
I mean, that's my own opinion and what I've had experience with myself.
Okay, so you wanna make the motion?
Oh, okay, I guess that's sincere.
You're, you're, you're the car guy.
Do you have a P O.?
I do not, fine, I mean, we didn't know which one you were on to go with, so I can bring it back in.
She's got one.
I get those tires and that one there. Here, I'll go for you. If you'll just put both different numbers on there. I can add them together for you, so. Yeah, this one I actually put in the Geolander's too, it didn't do the haircuts.
I've got a total about to get the first.
Oh, you got it, yeah. And the ticket. I tell you, that must be dumb, I don't even know how to use my own.
Calculator?
Dumb phone. They say these are smartphones, I don't believe it.
So in regards to a vehicle, how does that come out of departments expenditures?
Right now, it's just under, I don't even know that we have a maintenance line.
Yeah, we go out of the commodity.
Commodities, yeah, come out of commodities, but we don't have an individual line item for vehicle repair. Something we probably need to add.
So you can plan for maintenance.
Going through the, yeah, going through this, yeah, going through this change here for better. Track that stuff a little bit better that way.
Alright, so I would move to approve the fixing of the rear on two thousand fifteen Chevy Silverado in the amount of sixteen eighty-three ninety-six. And the purchase of a set of Yokamagio Lea- Geolanders, uh, all-train tires in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-two dollars for a grand total of twenty-five thirty-five ninety-six to be paid for from the appraiser's file.
And paid to who? To who?
Uh, Hammond's Auto Repair, I'm sorry. And that's based on three different, uh, bids we have here, so if they wanna look at those later.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I believe the next thing that I could put on the agenda was, um.
Attach this to this to that, and I'll have her sign that.
And then I'll give you these, I'll just put back in the file in case somebody wants to. Bring it in.
See what we have. What's the timeframe they said it'd be?
Um, he didn't go and give us one, we were just collecting quotes.
Where's the truck at now?
It's still up at, uh.
I guess I should have asked, does that include them going to get it?
It probably does not.
Because he has his own truck, that's why I'm wondering that.
I'll call and talk to him and see if he's just gonna go and get it. So it might be another cost on there. Um, I received a letter of resignation from Sarah, she's gonna be going back to school. Uh, and so I need to list for a position in my office. Um, I just want to give you guys a heads up that you.
Is Sarah the one, I was at the front counter?
Yes, yeah, yeah. She's the one that had left part-time, uh, while she was at school, but she wants to, I guess, go a few more hours, just get it wrapped up, so.
So do you need a full-time position?
I will, because that was full-time.
Okay.
And, um, we had dropped it back to half-time, transferred, uh, some, some of the duties to different places in the office to try to make up for that. We were missing four hours a week, I believe, from her, or five hours a week, so. Uh, it was, she was almost full-time anyways, she was right at the upper limit of that, so.
So then you're posted as full-time?
Yeah, I'm posted as full-time. Okay?
Good.
Any questions? Okay, I'll get back in there.
Have a good day.
Thank you. Next item is Sheriff Chris, Chris Wells.
We're just wondering for Explorer. So you have one of the last two vehicles that we're gonna order?
This is for which one?
This is for the Ford Explorer, the two of those.
How's this price compared to the trucks?
It's cheaper than the Silverados. Obviously, it's a little more than the Dodge Rans, but the Dodge Rans.
Yeah, how about Tahos?
Uh, it's three thousand dollars cheaper than the Tahoe.
And have we got any record on how these have held up yet?
Uh, we have one right now that is doing amazing, uh, haven't had any calls with it yet.
I was thinking we had one that we got from Ohio until we had to put a transmission in.
Uh, those were four, five, six years ago.
Okay.
They were old world.
Okay.
On the ones we've been replacing, have you gotten those sold, or I know.
Yes. Uh, we got four of them sold, uh, for about thirty thousand, which usually in the past, they had traded them in and they got about twenty-five hundred dollars apiece. So we got significantly more by doing the auction.
And that's funded in that vehicle fund, which is what's paying for it?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, I just brought the checks back, there was, was there?
There's thirty thousand twelve or four.
I have to get it.
The other one was a.
Oh, there was another one, it's a different.
Yeah, it was a, uh, asset forfeiture.
So instead of doing the twenty-five hundred dollars that they were doing in the past, we've been taking it to an auction and they've been substantially.
Yeah.
I was just curious, I knew that that's what we're doing, I just knew with the ones we've been purchasing, I didn't know if the ones we're replacing had been sold yet.
Yeah, uh, four of them, and then we'll have two more that we'll sell. Um, once, cause we have two more Explorers.
Cause that's what's funding that vehicle, shared vehicle account, is that when you're selling.
Part of it, and then the, the budget, obviously, is the other part.
Yeah, cause the budget had six of them in there, but I don't know where they put the extra money. It's, I mean, the, the sheriff's department runs through the general fund, so it'll all come back in, the other monies too, so. Uh, I would move that we approve purchase order thirty-nine thirty-six to Superior Emergency Vehicles in the amount of fifty-seven thousand ninety-six dollars and forty cents for a two thousand twenty-four Ford Explorer for the sheriff's department, paid out of the vehicle fund of the sheriff's department.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 I brought the last of the two, if you want to approve it now, it doesn't have to be approved probably for another.
When's it gonna be here?
It'll be a month, at least a month now.
So it's probably a wait till it gets, so they gotta build on it in case something happens between now and then, if it wants to get hit in a storm. Why we're getting storms, anything could happen.
Yeah, we had a heck of a night, lots of down storms.
Tornado down north of Burlingame, is that correct or incorrect?
There's no confirmation of that, destruction lines.
Okay, just a lot of power lines and everything, cause I know Les is up working.
A few, a couple trees down, uh, I think Burlingame had a power line or two down, Scranton had a power line down. There was, I mean, there was little stuff, but I think that was straight line lines, cause it was spreading through the entire county, just that area.
I can test for the wind, cause I got torn lines down.
It also says personnel change on here, is that?
Uh, that fell through.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good day.
Franny Dieters with General Transportation, in blue today.
Where's all your purple at today?
No, it's in there.
Oh, okay.
It does look more.
I'm a one-colored one, I guess. I keep thinking I might have.
For the minivan, okay, for minivan.
Is this the one that broke down?
Yes, and it's back and fixed.
Is this the new one?
Hold it, this is the brand-new one?
Yeah.
And it broke down?
Well, three times. But it's back, it's, once it had it back to the back.
So what were the issues?
First one was when they, they buy them from Chrysler and they pick up the Kansas truck, they'll, they take out the floor, lower the floor, put the ramps in, and they poked an air conditioner on. So it had to pack, they took the floor out, put it in the line, and that's working.
And we paid for that?
No.
Oh.
This is still, we haven't paid the original purchase price yet, cause it wasn't ready.
So they fixed that, then it was, they pulled up, my driver pulled up a stop sign, it wouldn't shut off, it wouldn't go out of gear, it wouldn't do anything, so I had the tow truck take it to Auto. They weren't able to fix it, and we got it back last week. KDOT made our deposit for, um, sixty-three thousand sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Say that again.
I have a question on that secondary issue, that, we again didn't pay for that either.
We're not paying for nothing.
Okay.
Now I'm gonna pay for the tow truck, took it to Auto.
Thank you, Frank.
So this would have all been done in our previous budget, so the funds are sitting in some account, because these are the buses that were held up for so long. So this has nothing to do with even the current budget.
Yeah, we had approved a certain percentage.
You had approved twenty percent.
For, like, four or five vehicles, and that was a while ago, so.
So this amount is seventy thousand, but the state is reimbursing sixty-three thousand sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Correct, and that came into our account.
So it's costing the county.
Seven thousand dollars, the twenty percent we were supposed to pay. Actually, it dropped to ten percent.
We're only paying ten percent?
Yes, because they were canceled and had to be reordered, you know, with COVID and all that.
So that is the check, or you've already deposited and that's just the stub of the check?
The.
No, this is a different, they, this is the truck's invoice.
Was deposited on May third and to, came as an automatic deposit. And then I have checked with the treasurer's office and it's been put in the account.
The state sent a check, we haven't written a check yet.
No, uh, yeah, I was asking.
This is the bill, that's the invoice for Kansas truck.
Oh, I thought, I misunderstood, I thought this was an actual, I see. So the reimbursement from the state's already here accounted for and deposited, I didn't, that's, I thought that's what happened.
So I would, I would move that we pay purchase order thirty-nine seventy-seven in the amount to Kansas truck in the amount of seventy thousand seventy-five dollars, of which sixty-three thousand sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents was reimbursed by KDOT. And this money would have been in a fund that we previously allotted in two thousand and twenty-three, I believe.
I think it was twenty-two.
I think twenty-two.
Do you know, when you checked with the treasurer's office, do you know what fund it's in? Is it just in your general commodity fund?
It's, yes, it's a general fund right now.
So can we put it as general transportation commodities?
It's on, general trans- public transportation.
Okay, and, okay.
She said, I just talked to her a few minutes ago, she'll get it into that account.
Okay, and Michelle, did you get that motion? Second. Sorry, little slow, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm processing all of that that you were saying.
Yeah, and then I just thought you might wanna know for your information, this is our grant letter for this year. And I know you won't know if you even had people get it last year.
It's about the same.
I, I wouldn't ask that.
It's about the same as last year, isn't it?
We got a little bit less in the last one, just a little bit.
So, two years ago, they lowered it by half.
Right, cause the COVID money.
We were getting like three hundred and some thousand, and now it's down to like one fifty.
Hundred and sixty-four.
So they've cut it a lot.
But the COVID money is gone, and that's what you were, I, like, when I talked with KDOT, that's what you were getting.
Kind of, even before COVID, we were getting like three hundred and some thousand, and then during COVID, they changed all the reimbursements to a hundred percent instead of eighty, twenty, or seventy, thirty. So they did a hundred percent for a while, and now they're back to their normal eighty, twenty, but the overall funding is half of what they were funding before COVID. I mean, they've, they've really cut it a lot, even before COVID, they cut a lot.
When do we need to sign the letter for them, if you brought it, we don't got it yet.
Probably July or August.
So this is twenty?
Uh.
Cause I'll be, I'm, I'm, this is twenty-fives, so now I have to start on twenty-sixths.
Where is, uh, or where are we at in the process of eliminating the extra vehicles?
Okay, I've got a lane release for one bus, KDOT. I've asked for the second lane release, and then I'm gonna sell two buses. And then when the next three minivans get here, I'm gonna sell everything.
So how many, we'll have.
I only two, I'll live one lane release right now, I'll be able to sell a bus.
So do you wanna send it, and we'll send it out there where we're sending the others and see where the mark goes? That's what I'm talking about, there's an option. So if you'll get it ready, I'll try to get them to pick it up before Wednesday, if it's ready.
Have it ready.
They'll probably come, there's a chance they could come this afternoon, I'd say probably tomorrow, but if that gives you enough time to get tags off of it, and, cause they have their own tags to put on.
You know, the tag off and everything out.
Have everything out of it, so.
Keys.
Don't need the keys, cause when it goes.
Lane release entitled.
Uh, yep. And then if you have a second set of keys, hang on to them when you wanna sell them. I don't even need time until sells.
I have to call KDOT because I'm not sure, because I keep a book on being able to.
Just keep it, we're gonna get it.
No, you can get that.
I just have one question, on the capital portion, it says none awarded, none requested, is that something? I just have one question, on the capital portion, it says none awarded, none requested, is that something?
It says we already got awarded new vehicles.
Okay, that's what, that is just for vehicles, okay.
And we don't, that would be probably ten years before we can get.
Right, all, all the vehicles will be replaced with an, when all the vans get here, everything will be replaced, we'll move out of vehicles again for quite some time.
And then it'll be ten years before we can get capital again to get new ones unless something changes, which is, I've noticed that that's, so it's changed with anything.
So with these, I mean, that's some of the information that you're working on the budget with Scott, but that'll kinda need to be part of that. Equation, is that everything?
I believe it is.
I'll reach out to you when I get out of here today and I'll call them and see when they have drivers coming this way. Okay, if you got it ready, I won't call you, I'll just tell them, come over here and pick it up, alright?
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Land Development, Tricia Webb, conditional use permit Z dash twenty-four dash zero one.
Just the actual. Shoot that down. Is this the one also?
Yep.
So does this one have that in it?
Yes.
So this final draft.
The final draft is.
Is those two together?
To be signed and it has everything in it that changes.
So do you wanna give it little information on that and go through what this is and?
Okay, so, um, R Rock LLC is requesting a conditional use permit to allow the establishment of day camp and associated activities within the unincorporated portion of Osage County, Kansas. So we are recommending approval of this conditional use permit with the following conditions and restrictions. They are allowed to operate a day camp and associated recreational activities including archery, outdoor crafts, fishing, and rifle target shooting. The use of firearms or the hunting of gang relating to the day camp use is prohibited. There shall be no overnight accommodations related to the day camp use. The applicant shall apply for and keep current all the required local, state, and federal requirements. The development of the day camp shall be in general performance with the approved site plan. No buildings shall be placed within or more than three hundred and fifty feet as measured in the section line of one hundred and ninety street. Building permits shall be obtained through the Land Development Office for any new construction or replacement of any building or structure on the premises authorized by this conditional use permit. All of their operations associated with these established by this permit shall conform to the outline of the operations submitted by the applicant with this conditional use application and was accepted by the County Planning Commission. The conditional use permit shall be reviewed by the Osage County Planning Commission to assess compliance three years from the date of publication of this regulation. Modifications or changes to the operation of any facts shall require a subsequent public hearing following any of this requirement by law. The owner may request modifications or changes by submitting a new application to amend this conditional use permit at any time. Any violations of the conditions as an approval may result in the revocation of this conditional use permit and it will be in full force effective from, after its publication once any official committee.
Okay, so with that, there is also the protest petitions.
Yes, so we received six protest petitions, five of them were filed on property located within the one thousand feet. So that would be seventy-five point three percent of the land within the notification area, so in order to approve it would need.
A super majority.
And I thank those people here to speak on this also, Heather.
Yes, there are, I just wanted to, so with this, for us to take any action, we would have to call less.
Yes.
Because of that, so.
Yes, you, you couldn't have, we can't vote on this one too, we'd have to have all three commercials.
So with, uh, the individuals that have filed the permit, is there any, any, I know you've, I visited with, um, you, well, last week you had called me and then you visited briefly with me this morning, is there anything additional you would like to add?
Wouldn't you like to bring it up?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm Jonathan Kalima, my wife Chris. And a lot of people call me Jake, so you might see it on documents or emails, Jake, so. Um, this all started about a year ago, we'll let you back up a little bit more, so, growing up, being in the outdoors was a huge part of my getting in less trouble, I'm not gonna say staying completely out of trouble, but getting in less trouble as a kid. And also, uh, my faith in going to church was a huge part of that as well, and so Chris and I started to look at organizations we could support or start our own, um, or what we ended up deciding was having a facility where we would own it privately, but let some organizations come use it. And about a year ago, and I think this caused a little bit of the uproar in the, in the neighborhood there, I totally one hundred percent get it. Originally, I was looking at, hey, could we fund this facility or even the ministry by doing a wedding venue? And we could pull a few weddings, help pay for the building, do that, and so I went through, actually did like a room and a re-site plan, I sent it in, it was to, um, someone previous to Tricia, um, at the Land Development Office, I never paid the fee, I actually emailed in to cancel it, unfortunately, it got sent out, the notification did, told my neighbors, I got it, because I own other property in the area too. And so I understand a hundred percent that would ruffle my feathers a little bit too, um, after looking into a wedding venue and talking to people that run them, zero desire to ever do that, ever, 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 ever. So we went down the road of, um, we're gonna build these private buildings, um, that we were gonna use for personal use as well, but also let some organizations use them. Um, because of that, maybe an error, um, I decided not to go the CUP route, so, um, because we're just gonna build them privately. Well, then about February-ish, um, Tricia reached out and said, hey, you know, you guys probably wanna look into a CUP, and so that brought us here to today. Um, I know last, last time at the planning bill meeting, I think three people came and spoke, um, including one that's here today, and everyone was in favor of the day camps. They all brought up, um, the ho, not the hotel, I keep saying that, the wedding venue C, CUP they got filed and clarification around that, that, well, if you do this, does that allow him to do the wedding venue? And I think, is Russ is his name, right, the consultant?
Yes.
I thought Russ did amazing job, he went through it three different times saying, no, here's how this restriction works. And if you ever wanted to do a wedding venue, anyone in the area, they have to come, do another CUP, or try to get the thing resumed. Um, I think he did a really nice job of that. Um, I know there's also some questions about, um, traffic and because of, um, the main organization we're gonna let use it, which we're also a part of, it's called City Outfitters, doing six weeks of day camps, um, you know, you're talking thirty people a day coming and going from there twice a day. If you do the math on that out over the year, that's really no more additional traffic than I, if you added a house on the same piece of property and there's people living there all year long, going back and forth. Um, then the other thing was, someone asked questions on the buildings and we were out on that, so I did bring some pictures. Just to show you the high quality buildings that we did build.
And to be clear, these all had building permits supplied for and they were all in the correct.
So they all have the building permits, it's just that if it ended up being used for non-personal things, it has to go through the CUP, but originally it was personal.
Or special event.
Or special event, yes.
Right. The CUP just makes it where they don't have to go through a special event permit each time. So, because I asked that question, I called you and I called Russ and I said, why would they, you can do a special use, that doesn't get voted on, it's just a temporary permit that you get versus the CUP creates the situation where it's done for a period of time. And I think I've talked to you and I've talked to Mr. Forgiveness, I just forgot your name.
Tyler.
Tyler, I talked to both of you, um, both of you believe the camp is a great idea, so I don't think there's any debate of that. I think it's just a debate on how do you write the CUP to cover the concerns of the other property owners? And then talking with you, I think you've answered most of my questions, and talking to Mr. Tyler, I think he's answered most of my questions. And I assumed you two were gonna talk to each other and I don't know if that conversation took place.
Well, we did just briefly, um, may I have my.
I don't wanna intrude on your time.
Well, what I'll do is I'll let him finish with anything that he might have to present and then after that, if you want, but if you, I mean, no, I'm saying you guys can finish if there's anything else.
Well, and so I, I'm volunteering for the camp and so I'm here, um, to answer any questions anybody might have about the camp. Um, I, um, do know that the last time there were some questions regarding safety and other things, and so I'm happy to answer any of those specific, um, questions that people might have, I just wanna be a resource.
Well, I mean, if you wanna just tell a little bit about the camp and then any, that information that addresses.
Yeah, sure, so the camp, um, the, the mission and the purpose of the camp is, um, focused on mentorship through, um, discipleship of primarily like older kids to younger kids through using outdoors. Um, which, um, we have three boys and so that is something sort of there and primarily tactile, and so we wanted to make sure that they were able to sort of get outdoors um, and be able to be with other believers. Um, safety wise, um, is super important for us and so things that we, um, specifically thought about when, um, working on the camp were, um, providing, uh, storm shelters, um, things like that, so we were really intentional about doing that, um, making sure that everybody who is, um, staffing and volunteering at the camp have background checks and so, um, making sure that we, um, made sure with KDHE that we had appropriate licenses or things like that that we may need. And so we were extremely intentional, um, about making sure we had the processes and procedures in place in moving the day camp forward, so. Just wanted to make sure that people were aware that we were pretty specific about moving that forward.
And I'm assuming where I can see in the archery and the rifle, air shooting, you're shooting into something that has a, a a bank or whatever, like a shooting range will have, where you shoot, if behind it, it's gonna have a big wall or it's dirt, whatever, but.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that same type of setup's here, so there's no danger of flying.
And calling air rifles is probably a little bit of an exaggeration, they're more like BB guns, but maybe technically they are.
Because there's no, there's no other, I mean, we're not shooting rifles, you're not.
No firearms.
You're not hunting game.
No, we wanted to make it, um, as low impact as possible for the neighbors as well. Um, because we live in the country as well and I wouldn't wanna hear firearms going off nonstop in the summertime, so that's why it's, uh, simply kept to air rifles, which are very common.
Well, those need counties, that's normal.
And it's also just important to, for us to, that, um, both girls and boys are, feel comfortable at the camp and also the experience of outdoors. Um, so we want somebody who has never been in the outdoors to be able to be comfortable and to come experience this. And so it was really important to have crafts and just from every experiential level. Um, and so even our executive director and other volunteers have gone and gotten certifications to be sure that they had all the information, education, um, both in that particular craft, but then also in helping teach as well, so.
Do you have any questions for them?
I do not.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Don't think so.
Okay, thank you so much. And I'm gonna apologize, I've already spoke to you at least once or twice, but I cannot, I wanna say.
I'm ready for Tyler.
Tyler, I said, I was gonna say Keller.
And my wife Chris is right here too.
Yeah, so if you wanna have a seat?
Yeah, thank you, appreciate the time.
Does this draft happen Saturday?
What Jake and Chris just said, a lot of it is, we, we are in agreement with, we believe that the, uh, day camps are a good thing, I don't think anybody's ever said that the day camps were a bad thing. We're fully in, um, belief that those are good for the kids that attend. But we did have, um, virtually every neighbor that was in the thousand foot area file a protest. And I think with one exception, um, they all filed a protest, and so I'm not here to speak on their behalf, I can't speak for them, um, but I did, I have spoken to all of them kind of Friday, Saturday, and over the weekend timeframe to get an idea of what everybody's thoughts were on this. And, um, the, the thoughts, as you might imagine, are, are pretty, pretty evident. First thing is, is that, um, as, as Jake mentioned, you know, it, it, it started out being something different and then it changed to the day camp, and I'm not sure why or how that happened, but that did get everybody's attention. You know, the, um, I, I think that, just going through the, the top three or four things, that every, seemed, everybody was on the mind, on everybody's mind was that, um, you know, that, that, the, the day camp is a business, um, it's gonna be a day camp this year, what's it gonna be next year? And I'm paraphrasing some of these comments, is it gonna be something bigger, is there gonna be more land involved, we don't know. The owners don't live on that forty acre piece or anywhere on the other five hundred plus acres they own in that area. Um, so they're coming out there to recreate, uh, to do what they, what they do out there, nobody, um, you know, believes that that's a bad thing either, but, but the fact that people are paying to come out there and do it as well, that constitutes a business and that has a, is a concern for us. And, and virtually every neighbor that filed a protest, with one exception, does live in that area. Next door, across the street, around the corner, whatever, um, but they all live, with one exception, in that area. We, we know about the, uh, the forty acres, but what's gonna happen on the other five hundred plus acres? I know we can't talk about that today, we can't include that in the CUP, that's a concern that people have. Talked about traffic a little bit, um, will the camp be restricted to the forty acres? Um, will the kids be able to go to some of the other property that's around, um, on, on some of the acre owned, owned by Jake and Chris? They, they addressed the safety of the kids things a little bit, um, and that's something that, um, a lot of us have mentioned as well. We'll tell you this, that in my, in my conversations with neighbors, and some of those were phone calls, some of them were standing out on somebody's driveway talking, there's two or three of us talking together, but we didn't have any specific organized meeting to say, let's get this all together, because a lot of it was just conversations amongst us. And what we decided was that nobody was going to pull their protest petition unless everybody pulled their protest commission, uh, petition. Because we didn't wanna get into a situation, well, these concerns are valid, but these concerns are not. Everybody's concerns are valid and unless everybody agrees to pull these petitions, none of us are going to do that. So my question to them was, what would it take for you all to pro, to pull your protest petitions? And I will say, there was one of the neighbors that's filed a valid protest that I still haven't got a hold of. I've called him a couple of times, just haven't been able to get a hold of him yet, so, but with that exception, what we came up with is that the, the list of restrictions that was, that was read by Tricia a little while ago were sufficient with, uh, with a couple of extra things that may not be able to be included in the CUP. My understanding is some things can be included in the CUP, but other things cannot be. Um, as an example, one of the things we wanted to do is make sure that the thirty kids per day limit was held and it didn't go to fifty or seventy-five or, or whatever. I, I think that's probably something that can be included as a con, a restriction on, on the CUP. But the other two things was, uh, one, one was just, uh, one couple was just adamant that they will not pull their protest petition unless there is some sort of an agreement in place that, that absolutely eliminates any further building construction on that forty acres. They're concerned about, of course, the, you know, the possibility of a wedding venue, which you heard pretty strongly, Jake doesn't have plans right now. Um, but, but my, uh, in my forty-six years of business, what I've always found out is that verbal agreements work really well until they don't. And, and that's why we wanna have something, some sort of a written agreement in place that restricts building and construction on that. And that there's a survey done of the forty acres with, um, some sort of permanent markers put in place, um, to show exactly where the property lines are, and that was more a concern of not just encroachment over to somebody else's property, this is obviously a property that's contiguous, this is.
And who would pay for that survey?
I'm sorry? I'm sorry?
Who would pay for that survey?
Our proposal is that Mr. Klema would do that. So with, if we could get a written agreement. Add, add one more condition to the, to the CUP and that's the limit the kids to so many a day, the thirty a day that it is now. Let's get a side agreement that would cover a survey and the ban on construction. Then I think that all the neighbors would pull the protest petitions. We don't have that agreement today, sounds like you can't vote on this today anyway. I would propose that I get a agreement to Mr. Klema by Wednesday noon or something like that. He would have a few days to look at it, we could talk it over, revise it if needed, sign it, execute it. And then perhaps you could vote on this next week. That would be my proposal, suggestion. Questions?
I have, I have a couple of questions. They're eliminating a building construction, what if they needed to build a bathroom? Can't build a bathroom? Yeah, that one might be a problem, you might want to, I mean, if I was owning the property, I probably wouldn't want to sign that. And now if you constituted it, I couldn't build a wedding, you know, whatever size building, if you put a stipulation there, that might change it, but. Any of those buildings would have to go before the planning and zoning committee again, and if they didn't, then they'd have another problem. So you would have, any existing buildings is already going to have to go through a process of the planning and zoning board. So I, I don't know if you could actually put in there eliminate building, because now you're telling them they can't pull down a property, I don't know if we can do that. But with that, I believe CUPs, we have to do a better job on a county level, because we have some CUPs in this county that are causing us a disastrous problem. And the reason they are is because the X's weren't dotted and T's weren't crossed. So we will pay diligent attention to making sure that whatever agreements put in, that Mr. Klema follows it and also the other property owners. And it has to be fair to everybody, so. That, that's kind of where I'm at. I understand where you're coming from and I, and I've talked to both of you, I've had a nice conversation with Mr. Klema, I've had a nice conversation with you. I don't know where Jake stands on whether he's going to sign something to eliminate building construction, the survey. In most surveys, if there's a reason for a survey, then I guess it makes sense, but if it's because another property owner wants it, maybe they ought to split the cost of the survey. I'm going to assume that most people know where the boundary, boundaries are for their land by fences or whatever. Now, if there's, if there's a question on that, then you got the bill, now you're deciding whose land's what, so. I don't think we can do that as commissioners, I guess is what I'm saying.
Yeah, and I, that's, you know, I'm, I realize that you probably can, but, you know, what we have in here is a three hundred and fifty foot setback from the front and I think. Was the hundred foot setback on the west, was that included in there? That was one to Russ and I talked about, I thought he sent me a.
There's a hundred foot setback from the building.
On the, what, that's on the west.
He has a subject.
See, one of the issues is.
Three hundred and fifty foot from the center line of Hundred and Ninth Street, but I don't see anything about a hundred foot. Unless I missed that in here.
Uh, he and I discussed that and that was the same property owner that wants the survey done. She is concerned that. There, there could be some encroachment, because it is there, there is a. My, I haven't been back there to look at it, my, my understanding is a fence part of the way back from the, from the north to the south, but not all the way back. And I think she's concerned about encroachment.
She's concerned about encroachment if there were to be a new structure put?
I think.
Wouldn't that require a building permit?
That would require a building permit when you have setbacks.
What, what are the setbacks on the, from the property?
That's why I was just going to ask the same question, what is our county setback on current properties, some of our buildings? It's twenty foot?
But any structures or anything would require?
What, what does the, who, who, who submits the building permit in the event that another? I, I'm confused as to the ownership of this property, my understanding is that I Rock LLC owns the property. Mr. Klema is the registered agent for the property. Prior to it being I Rock LLC, it was called Castle Farms LLC. It's, for some period of time, I think it was in the names of Mr. and Mrs. Klema individually. So I'm not sure who would have to file a building permit to have an additional bathroom built, additional.
It would have to be the landowner.
Well, the landowner can as well as the construction company, the contractor, they can't slide away from it.
So I'm not sure where we're at, but it sounds to me like you all can't vote on this today anyway, right?
Oh, unless we call, but I've not, I mean, if there's a chance that you guys can work this out and not have. I mean, when you got seventy-five percent of the property owners that have a problem with it, then I have some serious questions and I think I've told that to Jake and I've told that to you. There's two sides to every story, but I just know from all the personal opinion on CUPs, how many issues we've had and some that were done that. Let's just say weren't done properly in my opinion and probably didn't do enough investigative work and that's created where. A CUP gives a lot more power to the property owner than, if they choose to break some rules, they could not have to answer as much as a special event permit. Because a special event permit is strictly this day, that event, and then it goes, so. Not saying how to address that, I, I haven't figured that out in my own mind. I was hoping that you guys, after talking to both of you, that you guys would have something worked out between you and.
Yeah, and we just, we weren't, I, I just didn't have a chance to talk to all the owners, you know, until, and I still haven't talked to one.
So we have some more business to do. Would you object to having Mr. Klema and Mr. Tyler meeting with Trish? And seeing if they can come to.
If they want to visit, if they can come to something, that's fine, if they can't come to an agreement and it just comes back to us as is.
Exactly.
We would either have to call less for today or we would have to move it to the next week.
Correct.
I, I would.
And I'm good with that, if they, if you guys don't mind taking a few minutes to do that.
Um, he's probably in. A little, little bit of a time crunch, I, I, if we could settle this today, that'd be probably best for him and, and I'm, I'm ready to be.
So I've been thinking about that too, because if there's a time crunch, because I think his first admit is in June, is that the way I understood it? Was we could consider a special event permit for the one in June to get us past that date. But again, if you guys can go talk for a few minutes and.
Trish, is a special event permit for multiple days or, I thought it was for.
He had a requirement for multiple days, but in his application, he wanted to use it throughout the year. So he put down like two to three days a month throughout the year. And so that's why we want the CUP route, so that way he wasn't having to come in and fill out a special event.
And I get that, I have no problem with that, I'm just saying for this particular case, if we need the time, it gives him a chance to have the one permit and gives the one event and still gets time order.
Which we also do have, but it's reviewable three years.
Correct, I seen that.
That way we can, we have that timeframe, because the other thing is if he decides in two or three years that he doesn't want to do the day camp, then that releases the CUP use off of that property.
So with this week or next week and then it has to be published before it's in effect, is that what the last page said?
Well, the first publication that it goes in, so if it's approved today and I can get it into the newspaper by noon, then it will go on those.
On this week.
Yeah, once it's in the paper, it's official.
So I guess that's my question, is this week or next week, does that affect your timeline?
No, our first week is June thirteenth.
So is that something you guys would like today to try to discuss with him or would you? Or is it just going to come back to us as is?
It's an interesting concept that we're going to talk about. We're already putting pretty heavy restrictions on the property as it is, about restricted I think you can get with a C, by doing a CUP. And, um, once again, I get it, the way you're making rattle people, one hundred percent I can do it, I would be rattled too, but. I've stressed it probably eight times to Mr. Tyler that this does not allow me to do what I can do. And if I want to build any other structure, I've got to go get a permit and it's just the same conversation over and over and over. And having a civil contract with five hundred people, that means a contract I could never possibly get out of. If I want to sell it now or.
I'm not talking about a civil contract, I would never do that to you.
I think what his question is.
I just want to know if there's stuff we can put in the CUP that you would agree to and he would agree to. If it's a civil contract, we're going to want no part of it, because we're not going to be part of a civil contract. So this is a discussion you guys can have, if it can be added to the CUP. And we would send it to our county council to make sure that it's eligible to be in a CUP. And if that handles that, then there's a dispute and they pull back their protest, then you're, or you have to vote with the commissioners.
The one property owner I talked to, they were, they were very clear to me, they said, I will not pull my protest petition unless there is a ban on further, further construction.
Well, then that sounds like they're.
So you're saying that, and if they don't pull it, then nobody pulls it, is that correct?
Well, that's kind of, you know, like I said, standing out on somebody's driveway the other day talking, that's, but.
So then we're going to go with people, I would say that in that case, if there's no middle ground for them, is that we probably ought to get less on the phone and vote on this up or down now. If there's no middle ground, then there, then there's no reason to have that conversation, because it sounds like that's time to decide.
I, I think that, I think that, I mean, I could, I could call these people. If, if, if the building, the additional construction was limited to, you know, what you described, a bathroom is.
But I don't know if we can do that, that's why I'm saying, you guys go have a conversation, see if there's something, and if that works, that works. If it doesn't, we can vote on it the way it is. I'm just trying to make it where everybody understands what's going on and everybody feels like their problems or their stuff's been addressed. I think there's some stuff in here that if I was Mr. Klema, there's no way I would sign on to that. I mean, there's other things that in most property cases, if you're going to have an agreement, even closing, if you close on property and they have added expense, it's usually done at the seller and buyer's expense, so. There's some things, and if they want it so bad, then they need to be willing to pay for part of it. If they don't, then it's not that big of an issue, other than they're trying to create an obstacle that, whether it's there or not, I don't know, but it's not fair to them. I mean, I think they're trying to do the right thing, I've looked at this, I've listened to you, I've listened to them. Again, from the county's perspective, as far as what gets built there, I don't have much control on that now. The CUP part of it is what we got to make sure that we cover for ourselves, because the CUP stops a lot of things that we have. Or starts a different process that you got to go through to have anything done and that, that's the part that if you guys can come to an agreement with you, that makes it a lot easier on everybody. If you can't, then I get that, we have a vote and we go on.
So we have, we have.
I have, I have one thing, really this comes down, there's two things that can occur. This permit can come to us with the protest petition, which would require a three oh vote.
Correct.
Or if they work something out to where they pull the permit, it comes to us to where it doesn't require that. That's really the discussion here, is at that point. So that's the, the conversation that I guess they would need to have, that if there isn't a way to. If there isn't a way to suffice that things are asking to pull the permits, it's, then it would come to us in that manner, so that's really the discussion that we.
It comes to the board and the county commissioners, with a four to one in favor of presenting this form of building commission. So the question is, if, if you're on Mr. Tyler's side, do you gamble that they can't get a three oh vote? If you're on Mr. Klema's side, do you gamble that they can get a three oh vote? That's where it comes down right now, the way it sits. The thing that would change that, if you guys work out an agreement, the protest goes away, then it becomes a two to one vote, so it has to be approved. But it takes out the three oh vote.
Well, the other thing too is if he's going to get building from a number of buildings, that is going to require a whole other hearing for the planning and zoning. And then you guys can file your protest petitions and that's when you can come in and request the planning and zoning, that building will have the setback.
So we have a lot of things to do in here, I know. So if you guys want to go out of that conversation, I'm fine with that and we're going to probably be another thirty, forty minutes.
We just, we need to know how this is coming.
If we want to do this today, come back before, if not, we'll talk about it.
One, one, one more question, and we, I talked to Russ maybe about a hundred foot setback from the west. If we could add a hundred foot setback to the west and one from the east. Then I think that I'm, I'm just, again, I'm not here to negotiate for five or six other, you know, groups of people, but. Could, is that something that, that could be included in this evening?
I don't know. I, that, that's my thing, is my question is, if you guys go talk, then we, I don't want to start talking about all these things and then all of a sudden they go, oh, well, that isn't going to work. Because we got one person that doesn't want to do it and we're not going to pull the petition because we got one person. So I don't want to do that, either we can vote on it the way it is, or we can vote on it if it changes, but let's find out what we're voting on before we. I mean, that's where I'm at on it, I mean, I don't want to.
Could you broker that in the next few minutes?
I do have one quick question, how many protest petitions do you need to pull in order to not have a super number of votes? Because you only have one here.
She, so there's a threshold that has to be met and that would be, she'd have to answer that.
So we think we're going to get four on hold in thirty minutes?
That's not what I'm talking about, if you guys go talk and if there's stuff that you can do that he can go to those guys and pull it, then fine. Or you can have, or you can say, hey, I'd like it voted on today. And that's your, that's your option, we have a commissioner, it can be by, by phone, that we can have a vote today. Or you guys can go chat and see if you can work out something. Either way, it can get voted on either today.
It makes it really difficult without having the other individuals here that have filed the petition, because it's difficult to have those discussions, so.
I mean, if you come to some sort of bill that can be negotiated out or however and come back next Tuesday, it can be approved, be in the paper on Thursday. Is that correct? And that makes it official then, so you'd still be done by the end of May.
Only get that hold up. Yeah, thank you.
If it does, if the conversation they're going to work, come back.
Just bring it back. I don't see. I'm going to skip over county attorney and I'll go on to health department with Jackie Patterson.
Good morning. So we have three grants that are ending. Two are ending the end of June and one is ending the end of July.
So you got to spend money.
Yeah, a lot of money to spend. Also, in order for you guys to kind of understand these grants a little more, I know I've given these to you before, but. When I give them out again, no, this top copy is mine, if you want copies, you can have them made or I can have them sent to you, but. The top copy is the grant outline and says, that was what we were given in the beginning, you know, when we went to write the grant. Here's what you can write the grant for, here's the deadline, blah, 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 all that stuff. The other one is the financial, yes, that is, what, it's all zeros. Let me see the other page, sorry. Yeah, that's because there's nothing in those categories, the next page has.
These aren't anything we applied for then?
Well, that's just one grant, that is the financial status report for that grant and I printed it off from the state system. So that is what the state sees, when I write the grant, I have to put that information in. And then that information has to be approved by two different fiscal officers at the state that run this grant.
So what this form here is what you're requesting to use the remaining amount of the, of that grant on?
Those are the things that we have written in the grant to spend the money on that were approved to be spent. So, and this is with every grant that we have through the state. That particular grant is just one of seven. But that one ends the end of July, that's the ELC grant.
And these are the ones that you spend it, send it, they send it back?
Yes, so.
And who keeps track of when they're sending money back? To making sure that we're.
I send in a grant report quarterly.
Okay.
So all of these grants have to be reported quarterly. When I do that, I have to send in receipts of everything we've purchased. And then they will approve or disapprove any of those purchases, but they have to go on to those.
So I'm talking about how do we know when the money comes back to the county, because the county pays us before it's reimbursed.
It comes back and then it's autumn, it's, we get a check.
Okay.
Yes.
So the check comes in?
Yes, and it's quarterly, so for instance, one of the grants, we just got a check last week for, it's not one of these grants, it's for another grant. So they're not necessarily all the same time, because they're. So they're not necessarily all at the same time, because they're handled by different departments.
And you may already be doing this, and I just don't remember, but that would be great information, like, to come in and give us a report and say, okay, two months ago I requested this, we've received that.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I don't give an individual inventory of what we've ordered, um, but.
I'm just saying when those, those, um, the reimbursement checks are coming in, just as an update to let us know, I guess.
Okay, so you want me to come in every time and get a check?
Well, you said quarterly, so maybe on a quarterly basis, you can just give a report on what's coming in.
Because it doesn't come in all at the same time.
I just want to make sure that somebody's knowing that we're receiving the refund, the reimbursements. I, as long as you're comfortable that we're getting the money back and it's getting put back in.
Yeah, and all of that stuff. So when I get a check from them, I keep a copy of that check in each grant folder. And so it has a receipt attached, so it says what we went for. And then the check from the state comes over here, but I get a copy of it that is put in each grant folder to go back on and look. Um, in the grant system with the state, copies of every receipt, um, are documented and input, and then we go into the FSR report, like what you have, and we say, you know, hey, we requested two thousand dollars to go towards office supplies. And this quarter, we spent three hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. And those receipts have to total that, that I requested to be paid. If they don't, they won't pay it.
Right.
So with that, I also have the other two grants that are getting ready to end. Um, and I was giving copies for all four of you, so including Michelle. The top, the grants were kind of lumped together. They're called IAP three and IAP four. That stands for Immunization Action Plan.
So these are two different ones that I'm having.
Yes. Um, those were federal COVID funds that were given to each state, and then each state developed a formula um, to say how much each county got. And it was, um, population-based, among other things.
Are these all, I'm sorry, these are all the same?
No, there's two different ones. Up at the top, on the right-hand side, it'll say which grant it is. And those, those monies have to be spent by the end of June on that particular grant. Uh, well, there's two. I don't know that all the other are all spent, simply because it's pretty difficult to do, um, especially with trying to get approvals and get, uh, people to give you bids, and it, it's a very back-and-forth process. And then you have to research to even find some of the things. So it's been a process. But this is the other one that, um, I will be trying to spend down as much as possible. I gave you the, um, about the grant portions, so you can see what I can and can't spend the money on. Um, I think there's been some discussion about, uh, buying things for other departments, and we cannot do that. I can buy things that the grant will allow for the Health Department, and then things can be, it's a county asset, so things can be checked out to other departments. And I actually wrote a policy, and I forgot to bring it, but I wrote a policy for my department because we have an asset tracking program, which is one of the things at the very beginning, when I came back, that I got with this grant money. It's called Asset Panda. Um, and in that, everything is documented and tagged so that I can, it's, it's, it's our inventory. So if you want to look. It's all documented. So, um, as, as much as possible, every item is given an individual label with a barcode. It's scanned into the system.
And. Yeah, I've got something that we had asked, Michelle had asked if it's something that could be used countywide for some of our.
So Jackie, this still shows that lighted sign on the building. Is that the one that's already going to approve?
Yes, that was already going to approve. We just haven't.
It's in this budget remaining?
Yeah, because we haven't got it up yet, so we have to.
So that, okay. So does it have to be up on the building?
Money has to be, the money has to be committed.
Okay, so we've already done that.
Yes.
So, but it's still showing in the request for budget remaining, that's what I'm asking.
The Pappers, we already have those, and I'm actually not real sure why they haven't shown, because I have requested those. So that's something I have to discuss with the state, why it's still showing on there.
So this number back here that shows the staff overtime, is that, is that this number up here?
No.
Okay.
That's different. And that was in the beginning, when this grant was written, which is two, three years ago. Um, we were looking at paying staff overtime for various things because of COVID. Also, we could still use it if we wanted to do, um, off-campus or even on-campus, um, projects such as immunization clinics, um, hand washing or immunization, um, fairs, anything like that.
We would have to do that now, that school's out, so.
With that.
School would be out now, unless we committed it.
I, we won't be doing, we will be doing some teaching, but it won't be overtime anyway. But that is one of the things that's on there. Um, it's called Glitterbug, and it sounds really stupid, but it's a kid's thing. So they're kits that you buy to go into schools and do hand washing, um, teaching with. It's one of those things that we used to do when we were kids, if you did it. You put something on your hands, and then you wash your hands, and then you put your hands under a glow light, a UV light.
I watched it on TV on Bar Rescue, they showed that all the time.
Yeah, and you can see where you did and didn't get washed properly.
Right.
So anyway, it's just kind of a fun thing to drive home for kids, and how important it is to actually be washing your hands, not just poke them under the water and say, yay, we're good. Um, and that is one of the things I have, I have some purchase orders on some of these bigger purchases that I'm trying to get through. Um, so I don't see the section where we're talking about overtime.
Uh, page two, about, um.
It's on one of the.
About halfway down, staff overtime for working community events.
It's on IAP four, so supplemental for vaccine up at the top is what it'll say.
It's about halfway down.
And honestly, I don't think we're going to get that spent. And I don't have, I don't think I have time to rewrite.
I was thinking it was this. On the front section where you have salary and benefit requests, have those, were those already paid out during COVID, and this is just reimbursement to the county?
It will be reimbursement to the county. So every quarter, I request twenty-five percent of that, because we get paid a certain amount every quarter. I can only ask what the estate deems a reasonable amount, because obviously not all of our time is spent doing immunizations. So we can get salary reimbursement for percentages on, um, several grants, and we do do that. So we get.
So this just comes to the county?
Yes.
But have we already paid out, so this just helps reimburse part of your salaries for services you're already providing? This isn't money that's going to be requested, and then you're getting an additional salary.
No, no, those are, those are just already salaries. Yes, and then the figured, we use whatever numbers, we do the formula for, for all of the benefits. And then it's done on a percentage basis of time, how much time we think that person in the department will be spending, um, on specific, um, things within the confines of the grant. Um, so with that, I would like to ask, and I actually have some of the larger things here, but in reference to these three specific grants, if I have things that cost more than three hundred dollars, can I get them purchased? Because otherwise, I have to wait until I have, so I have what, five weeks left to spend this money, or have it committed.
So we ta, I, you and I talked about this, and I've talked to some other people already about it too. We've already kind of discussed raising that amount. Uh, even in our new financial book, it shows raising that amount, and I believe that number was up to two thousand.
Josh, Josh just sent me that reservation. You guys would like it?
Who?
Josh did.
Oh, in regards to that topic?
You guys want to repeat that one?
So if you have that, yeah, I wouldn't have a problem doing that now.
I do have a question. That's to these, though. I mean, if we, if we don't have anything we have to purchase, we shouldn't be afraid to force ourselves to spend the money. I mean, if.
No, and there's going to be money we aren't going to be able to spend, and it'll go back to the state, and then they will rewrite the grant, and they'll spend it.
I mean, I, you hate to buy stuff you really don't need just to spend it. I mean, if, if there's things we need, I understand that.
But I'm trying to do things that are assets to the county.
Yeah, and, and so these are things you're thinking in the future that we need, or some of these you've already purchased?
Yes, some of those we've already purchased. If there's a zero by it, we've already purchased it. Um, and there's some that have been spent down. So like office supplies and things like that. So yeah, we're doing things like stocking up on paper, on printer ink, and, you know, things that we can use within our office. Um, you know, we have built, or purchased some things that have been used in other places in the county as well. You know, we purchased a hand truck so that we can move when we get these giant shipments of boxes that we did during COVID. It was crazy. And that hand truck is in maintenance, so it's not actually in my department. And same with the waterfront.
So you're saying, were there zeros, that's already been spent there? So when it says, I guess I might be, I might not read this correctly, when it says request budget remaining, and then there's this total. Are you asking us to approve something today in regards to these?
I have purchase orders for specific things.
In relation to what you've already had on here?
Yes. The only other thing I was asking is if I can, if we're going to approve the two thousand dollar limit thing, that would help immensely. Because then I can make some purchases that individually, like through Amazon, would end up being more than three hundred dollars. Um, it would make it a lot easier for me to be able to put those orders in and get that stuff, uh, at least ordered, so we can get that money reimbursed. Um, other than three hundred, because three hundred, I mean, there's a label on it, we have on that, and that's more than three hundred.
Can you print that resolution, whatever he sent you? Did you, okay.
So in regards to giving money back to the state.
They do that automatically.
But they really do a wonderful job of spending our tax dollars.
What's that?
I said, they really do a wonderful job of spending our tax dollars, and we got nothing for it, and they just show it again.
Quite a bit of COVID grant money that the counties haven't been able to spend, that has gone back to the state. And they have, they've been doing different things with it. They purchased different things with it, and.
So I will trust you a lot more than I'll trust our state government spending the money. So if there's stuff that you think the county could use, may use, I would use that money, because they're not going to use it for anything good, other than maybe increasing their own wages without voting again. You can tell that kind of upsets me about when they give themselves that kind of increase and don't vote on it. I guess they didn't have to, because that's the way they wrote it. If we don't vote on it, it just automatically goes in. That's an interesting concept. Maybe we ought to do that at county level. Make rules, and we don't vote on, they go into effect.
Yeah, well, I think part of their, um, shield is that people don't watch their meetings.
Yeah.
They don't know what those are, they rely on.
Well, and I think I was misreading this. Like, I was looking at it like you're wanting us to be approving this full amount today. I was misreading what you were saying, that these are things you've allocated for, and you're here today to ask for certain.
Yeah, I've got certain things here.
According to what's.
Yes, the only other, the only other ask I had was that resolution you had in front of you to, for something like that, that would be.
Which, this had several people ask about this resolution, so that's why Josh just started working on it.
What's that?
Several other, yes, several people have asked about this, so. I thought it was already done. I thought we did this a few months back when we first started, knowing what inflation's done, three hundred dollars isn't going to get you much. Um, so with that being said, I would move that we approve Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash ten, which is a resolution regarding authorized expenditures, which would change that from three hundred dollars in value to two thousand dollars in value without prior written authorization from Board of County Commissioners.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 And I have four purchase orders. First one is for two new scope sets. It's up at the top. You can see what grant it's in.
Would you let her know that too, or the rest of the departments know that? You want me to read those, and then I'm going to sign those.
Yeah, that's, uh, two different Otis, or they're the same, but two Otoscope sets. They go one in each of our exam rooms. Which was really handy that we could pay, use grant money for, because the one we have quit working.
So I would move to approve purchase order thirty-nine forty-six, and correct me if I butcher this name, but is it McKesson?
McKesson, yeah.
Um, through the Health Department Fund, through the IAP three grant for two Hill and Welch otoscope sets in the amount of twenty-four seventy twenty-eight.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Next one is from Quill, which is our office supply, um, company. This is for two sets of two, so we had total of four latching storage bins with wheels. This will be used to replace the current storage bins we have for our emergency response totes, which we have that are about the size of this table. No, they're not that big, but.
So with the motion, with that resolution, we just put it into effect, you don't even need that purchase order now?
Okay, well, I wrote them before I came here, so.
And we can do that since I'm here, but.
These two are over two thousand.
Do you want these on these or not?
Not over two thousand.
Okay. So the other two, this would be an Amazon order. It includes a portable electric cooler, an AC DC converter that goes with that cooler, a WeBoost signal booster, um, for the cell phones, which I have one of these in my house, and it's amazing. A smart TV, which will replace the one that's in our waiting room, um, and then a mounting bracket for that television.
So how old is it to put that Webbo cell signal down?
That includes installation.
But I'm just thinking for myself, because if I'm in my building at the car lot, my phone will not work inside.
I was going to tell you. So when we lost our house and built, we built a metal building, so you can imagine what great cell service we got, and it wasn't good already. We didn't get, we, we are in Lane Hollow, which I believe is the lowest point in the entire county. So, um, getting internet, we couldn't use any of the other providers. We couldn't use HughesNet, we couldn't use any of them, because they have Catalina site. Um, and so we set up Wi Fi's, little Wi Fi boxes, so we could use our cell phones for internet. So, well, the cell service, not our actual phones, but the little Wi Fi devices. Eh, not great service, and it was spotty. I bought one of these and put it on my house, and it's amazing. So if the electricity goes off, they don't work, and our cell phones don't work. So, but those, um, are worth the money if you have trouble getting cell service inside your home. Or if, like, for us in Barnominiums with the metal buildings, you don't have good cell service, so.
Which grant number is this one?
Uh, that is.
ELC, okay.
Yes.
So I would move to approve purchase order thirty-nine forty-eight in the amount of two thousand eighty-nine dollars and thirty cents to Amazon to be paid out of the Health Department ELC grant.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 One more, but I'm out of here here. This is for the glitter bug hand washing supplies. Those will be purchased and, um, each.
I'm glad I re-looked at this, because when I first looked at it, I said, I thought it said Beavis, but it says Brevis.
Yeah, that would be fun. That one is for the different kits, and we will get enough that each school, each USD could have supplies.
So I'd move to approve purchase order thirty-nine forty-nine to Brevis from the IAP three grant, uh, for glitter bug hand washing supplies in the amount of forty-two hundred dollars.
Actually, I should rephrase that, because with the grant, I can't buy the supplies for them. I buy the supplies and the kits. I go and do teaching at each school, so I'm not just giving the stuff to the school to do. It is, I needed to rephrase that, because it makes it sound like we're.
So do you need to rephrase that to not say?
How do you like this written on here?
That, it's fine like that. I just, with the recording, if somebody sees it and says, oh, well, you're buying stuff for the schools. Well, no, I'm not. I'm buying things.
Training ants for glitter bug hand washing training and supplies.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And I'm done. I do need...
Did you, uh, I was gonna say, I thought that didn't look like one I should have.
Do you need this one?
Yes.
And that was everything?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Do you know if Tanya's available?
I have her here.
Thank you. Is the date of request wrong? It says 3/15.
That's when she came in and started working all that and stuff, so that would be the first official day.
She's already started working?
Did her paperwork, yes. She should see her today.
Okay, so they filled out paperwork March 15th, but her first day is today? Because today's May.
She's been in here, like, his first official was 15, and then during payroll, so that's a yes.
So I had my payroll as well.
She hasn't worked and had any payroll, so her payroll won't be after, I mean, any, any time.
It'll be before the, what's today? It'll be before tomorrow, yes.
So she's worked before today?
Yes.
Do you know why we're just now getting that? Did she not get it to you, or, I mean, what?
She's, previous to the course, I don't know.
Is she? I would prefer to visit about, I mean, that's almost, that's over two months old.
You want to go down and talk to her?
It says March 15th.
I bet it's 5/15.
Okay. Oh, that's what I was saying. I was like, well, this says 3/15. Okay.
She must have a moment, yeah, no. 5/15, right, not 3/15, what? I'm sorry, New Year's Eve is 5/15, it's 12.
No, it's the date 5/15.
Oh, I'm so sorry, yes. I'm sorry, she must be there, yeah. It was Wednesday.
Okay, because this says March 15th, and so I was asking, has she already been here? Okay, so I'm gonna...
I can see that bar is like, I'm not sure. No, I'm so sorry, it was, it was this last Wednesday. I'm sorry, she's been four upstairs. So I had a great error as well.
And I seem to have it on there as a temporary position, so.
Do you guys have questions?
No, that was just the only one, because it said March 15th, and I was like, well.
Did you not write that?
I did.
I saw you did.
I think she was a little bit, I'm sorry about that.
I just crossed, I mean, I don't know if you want to do one or not, but I could.
Sure. Do you make a motion, Jane? Jay, do you make a motion?
Yeah, he'll need that to say the right name.
You don't want to make the, I was just gonna hand it back, he's gonna be signing.
It's just easier if you do it than I do.
So I would make the motion to appear the payroll action form was presented from the county attorney's office. How you want it?
Well, I, yeah, I mean, yeah, it's for Katie Baker, for receptionist, started 5/15 of 24 at a salary of $12 an hour.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We don't sign that, do we?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want me to sign that for her?
Yeah, you can sign.
It also says 3/14 here, so that needs to be changed. What is today?
20.
They'll probably need to admission that, so. You probably don't have to do that then. We should be in the 860, shouldn't have to do that.
No, not now.
There's a couple items on here I'm not familiar with. So one says commission discussion on IT bid procedure, and one says payroll question.
And we all have cell, we'll just move to next week.
Okay. So we would be down to executive session with Land Development, Tricia Webb.
So she's up talking to them. You want to recess for five minutes and, or 10 minute, we won't recess for 10 minutes, and I'll use the rest to talk.
Okay, so we'll recess?
Till 11:20?
Till 11, returning 11:20. And I'll see if I can go get her. Is this? Is this the bill sheet?
Yes.
Can I get a different one?
Um, well, it looks a little different, but...
Yeah, I mean, I scanned it. I'll look through it, but if it doesn't have the departments, that's really hard for me.
I've got all vouchers in here.
Meeting. I guess we could take your public comment, since you were not here during that time.
Yeah, thank you. As a member of the media, I was contacted by several people last week. I don't know what happened after the commission meeting. I was just wanting to ask clarification with our two fellow officials. Is there, do you have any comment on that, or could you?
I don't at this time.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess we'll look over the meeting minutes.
Yeah, I've already been through them too. After I figured out that other sheet wasn't part of the minutes.
Are you ready? Okay, so do you want to address the CUP, or do you want executive session?
Which we do before first.
Have you got the resolution figured out, and we'll talk about it first if we want?
So we're sort of at a midpoint, because they want an extra 100-foot setback. We were already granted the 300, but we want more. Per regulations, they have a setback on the sides of the property.
So it's 50 foot.
Mm-hmm, and now they want 100. But that would also make, make up that driveway, that is 15 foot. And then, um, the survey that they want done, he has agreed that he can put in two posts, so that way the kids know. And they'll go through here.
So does it come back to us still with the protest petition?
Well, they had, if they were going to pull them, they had to have pulled them in after 10 days.
Okay, so thank you.
So what you just said, is that in the new resolution or not?
No, because there's already a lot of decisions on that, so on top of the whole...
So it's not agreed to, to do what you just said, then?
No.
Okay.
So I would like to leave this the way it is, because if they do do a building, then they still have to go and go through all of this again. So at that point, that's when we would deal with it.
With the setbacks? If there, if there was a future structure, then you deal with your setbacks at that time?
So to make sure I understand, then, right now, our regulations show 50-foot setback, not 20?
Not 20.
Good. Um, you want to call us?
You can see if you can get ahold of me.
He might want to break. If he's in the middle of doing power lines. Oh, not looking good. We got his voicemail, unless he doesn't have these. Hello? Are you there? Hey, can I put you on speaker for a minute? We're in the commission meeting. We have a resolution before from Land and, from Planning and Zoning Board. Uh, so, yep. So I'm gonna put you on speaker. So I'm gonna put you on speaker. Can you hear us?
Yes, sir. Hello, everybody?
Got all the electrical back on?
Uh, most of it, yeah. We're tidying up some things right now, so we're on a downhill slide.
Good.
Yep.
So we do have the resolution before us. It's Z-24-01 in regards to the conditional use permit for establishment of the day camp and associated activities. It does have the protest petition that meets the threshold for that accompanied with it. So for us to go ahead and vote on that, we need to include you with that. Do you have any additional questions in regards to?
I haven't reviewed it. Actually spoke with Dylan a little bit, so I'm very comfortable voting at this time.
So with that being said, I would move on Resolution Z-2401, a resolution granting a conditional use permit for the establishment of a day camp and associated activities on certain properties within an incorporated portion of Osage County, Kansas, that we approve this based on a recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. You have one to sign?
I got the one that doesn't have any other items on it.
And I do give permission to use my stamp if necessary.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Okay, so we need you to stay for the next item.
Make sure you record that as a unanimous vote so they don't, for the protest petition.
Was that, was that passed with restrictions that Tricia Webb had facing?
They're in that, yes, they're in that resolution currently.
Thank you, Commissioners, for your help. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So if you'll come back over here. In regards to your executive session, who are you meeting in the executive session?
Myself.
You know, I know who it is.
I would move we go into executive session with Land Development Director Tricia Webb for non-elected personnel for a matter of 10 minutes, returning at 11:37? 11:36.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bring my glasses?
Yeah.
No action taken in executive session? Did you say you read the minutes?
I'm good with it.
So I've moved that we approve the regular meeting minutes from Monday, May 13th, 2024.
Sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm good with the bills also.
Yeah, I don't know if I can do the bills. I'm gonna look through this, but I...
That's what that book's there for too, by the way.
Well, it doesn't have it by department, but it also doesn't tell what it's for. Like, this is just...
Well, here's what I'm asking. So they're not coming from the same place. The ones that pay are registered, and the ones that were submitted by five, did you see that, Michelle? So there are two different reports.
Yeah, they're different reports.
One's an APL T40, and the other's an APL...
Or even if we can get, if you want to print both, but for me, this gives the department, it gives who it's to, but it gives what the topic is, which helps me.
Well, I think the difference is, and I don't know, just trying to hold this CIC again. The one that I think you were wanting, we have to generate checks first. And I was trying to not generate checks.
I'm with you.
So we're not avoiding checks, just so you understand.
Yep, because we were done once a month, or twice a month, and they never come in.
So...
I mean, I guess for me, there's just no information here, and so for me, I'm like, I mean...
So are you issuing the checks each week?
Yeah. So when you guys approve them, if you don't approve something, then I won't generate a check. If you do, regarding anything, then I should generate checks if you ask.
I mean, I don't know as if we're ever not gonna approve paying the bills, and we can always avoid one out.
There's been times I've been pulled out.
I mean, there's been, every once in a while, there's one, like, I know we had the overwork...
Right, but we can always pull it if we need to.
I mean, it's just, if it's one, you know, we had the overwork failure issue one time, and then... I don't know, we had one. It's not very often, but for me, I'm gonna need some more detail.
You got five minutes?
We would like to have an executive session.
I got 15, I got 20, whatever you want.
Before we start with five, I would make a motion that we go into executive session for discussion of non-elected personnel with Matt Booker, also present from the President's office, for a period, let's just say till 11:50.
All in favor?
Do you want to bring any jar into?
If you believe we need that, yes.
Do we need that?
No.
Okay. If we do, we can...
So we getting to 11:50?
11:50.
Is that it, guys?
Next one.
Okay. What was our question?
No action, no action taken in executive session. Okay, so we approved the meeting minutes.
Hey, on my calendar, I have Scott Lloyd written on here for today. What?
It was planning on that, just, um, can't remember the reason why you canceled it.
Okay, so it's not on here now. Okay. Alright, so I'm not losing my mind.
Okay, so the only other thing I have on here is approval of the bills. For me, with this type of report, I need more information than what's on this particular one. So you said CIC was down, or something was down when you printed these, or?
No, I just need to hold it there. There's one report, for some reason, you can't get into. Sunny's tried, CIC's tried, Sunny says it's CIC.
Well, I think what you just...
But I think the thick, so I'm just guessing, that the report that you're wanting has to be generated after the checks are generated.
And it looks that way, because there's two different numbers on these reports, that's what I was just looking at.
I could totally be wrong, but I think that's the deal.
For me, I need some sort of report that has the departments broke down, who it's to, and what the, what it's for. So I guess we need to find out if there's a way to do that without generating the checks. I don't know, but... I need more information than what's on this APLT 23.
And the vouchers are gonna have all that information too. They're gonna have to, who it's to.
Well, it does. I mean, I don't think Les is wanting me to go through the vouchers during the meeting. I can do that, but I don't think he wants me to go through this book during the meeting. So for me to feel comfortable, I like the information on who it's to, what it's for, that sort of thing. Because I look at the vouchers after the meeting, and I do find them valuable, but I guess that would be a question for Les, is if he was... If we would be adding that to our meeting. So...
So this all happened when we went to a weekly, you know, I would like to, at some point in time, we need to have a discussion going back to having them twice a month, and we don't have this issue.
I'm hoping that maybe through all of the vendors, we change the dates, so we don't have it.
Yeah, in other words, we're gonna have this every week, and it's like right now, we have these bills to pay, and if we can't pay them because we want to look at everything, then we're in dead meat, so why are we gonna? So I think next week, put it on the agenda to discuss going back to paying the bills on the 1st and the 15th. In the meantime, I would make the motion that we pay the bills in the amount of $87,253.79 for this week.
So I have a discussion on that.
Sure.
Depending on what day we pay it, isn't really the issue, is that the report, I need a report that's got information on it that I can look at versus this one that got printed that it's very vague. It doesn't have the same information on it. So for me, I need some way to have a report that has more information on it. But I'm not gonna be seconding the motion for today's bills.
So the county is not gonna pay their bills? I will make a phone call to get another commissioner, and so we can get her, we don't want to be known as a place that doesn't pay our bills.
Yes, sir.
You're on speaker again. We're talking about bills, and I can't get a second on paying the bills because they, we don't like the new voucher system or whatever, so I might have two motions here. The first motion I'll make now is that we return back to paying bills on the 1st and 15th effective immediately. After today's bills, go back to paying them on the 1st and the 15th, as was in the past.
Les, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So there was just, there's a different report generated than what we've used before, and so for me, it doesn't have the information that I need. It doesn't necessarily have, um, it's not broke down by departments, but it's... It doesn't have what the description of what the items are for. It just makes it more difficult to know for sure what it is. I do have the book here with all the vouchers, which shows everything, but I guess my question would be, is, are we going to be spending time going through the vouchers during the meeting?
Well, that was put together that way, so it may go into the vouchers easier. Because in the past, they'd been getting kind of mixed up, and it was kind of a messy situation, so they were put together that way in a binder, so that it would be, you know, a little more streamlined, a little more easier to handle.
Sure, and that's fine. I mean, having them all there is nice, and it's all, she does have the departments tagged, but the report that's generated is vague compared to the other one that we had, so I... I would like to have a report that's got more information on it.
Uh, are the, I mean, is it, what's wrong with them? Is there something missing? Are some bills in question?
Well, the report just isn't, it's not broke down by department, and it also doesn't give description of what the vouchers, what the bill is for, so... I know the vouchers are here, but are you wanting me to look at every voucher during the meeting, instead of having a report that gives a description? Because that helps me determine if I have an additional question or not, but in the, the new printout, there's really, there's no description of what the, the bill is for.
It sounds like, according to the, I looked at both the reports, and one of them is an APLT 23, and the other one's an APLT 40. One of them is produced when the check is written, and another one is produced before. So when the check is written, then it gives you all that information, which is why I'm requesting we go back to the 1st and 15th, when we pay the bills, checks will be written, we'll have the report, it'll have everything on there.
I don't know how that solves it.
I mean, I know, I understand your sentiments there, Jay. The only reason we wanted to do some weekly billing is it helped keep things from having to pay late fees as often.
And I think that's what Michelle knows, that just said that she was gonna try to reach out and get the payday, or the dates of all the things to where they will match up to our bill dates.
Okay, if we go back to the 1st and 15th?
Correct.
I am fine with staying weekly, which I think has worked really well. I just think we need to discuss what reports are available to us, and if you... If you guys don't mind this certain report, that's fine. I just would like to see what my options are for a more detailed report versus... I can look through all the vouchers during the meeting, if that's what you guys would like. I'm assuming you're not gonna want to set aside time for that.
Well, and again, we're trying to find the best for everybody. We tried sending reports out before, and then we were responsible, but so all this stuff is trying to find the best way to provide the most information to everybody. So we can have a further discussion. I don't have a problem if everybody's in agreeance. You want to pay on the 1st and 15th? I think that's probably easier for Michelle anyway.
I would like to stay weekly. I don't think we need to be coming in on the 1st and 15th. I know we've had this discussion many times, but I think just having them included in...
It doesn't seem to be working.
Well, I think we need to have it included in the regular meeting, but also, if we're gonna do the 1st and 15th, we need to make sure that those are also, um... Where we have the meeting, where they're also recorded, because we've had some meetings that we do just payroll of the bills, and they're not also recorded, so having them...
Well, we don't have to record every meeting, and I don't see the need to put it up. Put a meeting when we're in there for 30 minutes, 40 minutes to pay bills, I mean, if the public wants that, absolutely, but I think that's not required anywhere.
I think discussion of the bills is really important if we have questions, and so I would hate to take that away from the ability of, of the public to have that portion.
So here's where we stand today.
Yep, we have an open meeting every Monday, and the bills are posted, and the meetings are posted, and if the public would like to attend, then absolutely, they're invited to attend. Broadcasting the meetings is a great thing, but it is, is above and beyond a thing, so we have to be efficient in everything we can.
So right now, we're at a, we're at two points. I've got two motions. One was to pay the bills in the amount of $87,253.79. That is not being seconded, which was done on a weekly basis, which is why I made the motion, we go back to the 1st and 15th, and we do the bills and payroll on the 1st and the 15th, like we had always, and get rid of this weekly monstrosity, or whatever you want to call it, that we never can get anything out of.
I will second your previous motion to approve paying the bills, but I would like to put it on the agenda to have a discussion on how we move forward, so I can be there.
I'm fine with that.
So I would, yeah, I would second the motion to pay the bills.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye.
And then, Michelle, if you'd be so kind to add that to the agenda for next week, we'll have a discussion, depending on how we want to proceed.
Okay. Do either of you have anything else?
You got anything, Les?
Uh, no, sounds good.
See ya.
Thank you.
Bye. I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. I gotta get to all the official stuff.